So basically, what you want to do is you're proving that the multiplicity of B is 24 times greater. So you want to find the fraction of these two. So let's first find the individual multiplicities of both them. And let's start with A first. So for A, we have nine boxes and there's four identical molecules. And this is basically saying, how many ways can the four molecules be arranged in the in the nine boxes? And if you've taken statistics, you could use the binomial coefficient to find this value. So the way I like to do it is with this notation, it's called nine choose four. So that's how many boxes you have. And then that's how many molecules you have. And then that is the same as saying nine factorial over four factorial, five factorial, which can be simplified as nine times eight, seven, six, times five factorial over five factorial, four times three times two times one. These cancel out and then you're left with nine, eight, seven and six over four times three times two. And then that will end up giving you 126. And then we could apply the same concept with the multiplicity of B. So that would be instead of nine choose four, it'll be 18 and then choose four. So again, there's 18 boxes and four molecules. So with the same reasoning, we could do 18 factorial over four factorial, 14 factorial. And then this simplifies down to this. Because the 14 factorials will cancel out and then you're left with 30, 60. And then what you want to do is just divide these numbers and that and then you'll prove that the multiplicity of B over the multiplicity of A is 24. And then for part two of the question, it's saying that find the ratio of the entropies S B over S A is equal to 1.7. So recall that the entropy formula is given by the Boltzmann constant times the natural log of the multiplicity. So if we do this for B and A, we'll have K B natural log of W B over K B natural log of W A. And then these cancel out and it simply becomes the natural log of the multiplicity of B over the natural log of the multiplicity of A. And then we have those values from part one, which is 30, 60 and 126. And then for part three, it's saying that the system, system B is twice as large as system A. However, the entropy is not, does not scale the same way. So why is that? So recall that Sterling's approximation is used to drive the relationship that the multiple that the entropy doubles if the system doubles. And you can find that in your lecture notes. But the thing is, you could only use Sterling's approximation in special cases. And there has to be two conditions met. And the first one is that M and N must be large. So the number of grid boxes and the number of molecules must be large. And then the second condition is that the number of grid boxes must be greater than the number of molecules by a lot. And we can see from over here that that's not the case. We only have nine boxes here in 18 and there's only four molecules in each. So we don't meet the requirement to use certain of the approximation. And then for the last part and four. So this one's requires a little extra thought, but so they're basically saying in system B, you have four molecules identical. But then they're split up into two energy levels. So now, instead of having a configurational entropy, you also have to consider an entropy, an energetic entropy. And whenever you have both an entropy in energetic and a configurational consideration, you have to multiply their multiplicities. So the multiplicity for B would end up being W B config for configurational times W B energetic. So the configure, the configurational under and multiplicity will be the same as before. It will be 18 boxes and then you choose four to be occupied by molecules times, however, in this case, for the energetic, you have four molecules and you want to choose two of them to be in the same energy level. So that's for choose two. So again, you have four molecules identical and then two of them are in the same energy level. So it's for choose two. And then that simplifies down to 18 factorial times. And then that should give you 18 through 60. And then the same could be applied to A. So you have W A config times W A energy. So the configurational energy again is the same as before. You have nine boxes and then you choose four of them to be occupied by four identical molecules. And then for the energetic, again, there's four, but now there are zero molecule. There is zero molecule, sorry. You could go both ways. You could either do four molecules and then zero of them have the same energy. Or you could say there's four molecules and four of them have the same energy. And four choose zero is the same as four choose four. So it doesn't matter which one you choose and that equals one. And in this case, we don't even have to consider this because it goes to one. So it ends up being nine factorial over four factorial, five factorial, which gives you 126. And then you just take the ratio of those two numbers. And then I think there's some questions in the chat. Okay, if there's any questions, let me know.
If there's no questions, I can start that presentation. Okay. So I'll be doing question two on problem set seven. And so question two is saying that there's a container which is divided into a large number of grid boxes. And there's no heat exchange with the surroundings and volume is constant. So you don't need to consider this. The container contains two molecules which are A and B. And there's a partition in the middle of the chamber that allows free movement of B molecules, but blocks the passage of A molecules. So A molecules will stay the same throughout the whole experiment. And the A and B molecules don't interact for the purpose of this problem. And so the question, the first question is asking, consider the two states of the system shown above. What is the change in entropy going from state one, this top state to state two? And express this in terms of the Boltzmann constant. So you don't need to multiply that out. And basically, looking at it, you can see like the main difference is that in state one, there's 20,000 B molecules in on the left side and zero on the right. And then in state two, there's 10,000 on both the left and the right. But the A molecules stay the same. And so those don't really need to be taken into consideration. And so we need to calculate, to solve this, we need to first calculate the entropy for state one and state two, and then find the difference between them because that'll give the change in entropy going from state one to state two. And for like these individual states, the entropy will be additive. So state one entropy will just be the entropy on the left portion of the container plus the entropy on the right side. And then for state two, it'll be the same, just the left plus the right. Let's get into like these equations. And then just like one thing that's important to note, entropy of A molecules will stay the same. As you can see between state one and state two, there's like no difference. So you could include them in the problem, but it would make it like a lot of extra work. And it wouldn't like change anything because you'd just be subtracting them from each other. So when we do this, we're going to just ignore the A molecules and focus on the B. Like it was when looking for the change in entropy. And so here are just the equations that the state one entropy will equal the entropy of the left plus the entropy of the right. And then state two will equal entropy of left plus entropy of the right. And then the number of molecules on the left side of state one is two times 10 to the fourth. And then the number of grid boxes on the left of state one is 10 to the sixth. And then for the left of state two, the number of molecules, remember, this is just B molecules is one times 10 to the fourth, which is also one half of the number on state one, which will be useful for simplifying the equations if you want to do that. And then the M to L will be 10 to the sixth again, it will be 10 to the sixth for all of them. And then same for N two, right? And so the main question we want to ask is what formula should we use to solve this? And so as we remember before, from like the previous problem, you can use Sterling's approximation because M and N are both very large and M is significantly larger than N. And so using that, we get this equation, which is the entropy equals for one state would equal N times K B Boltzmann constant times L N of M over N. And the derivation for this is in the book. And you could also get there using Sterling's approximation, but for like a test or something that would take a long time. So you probably want to know how to use this. And then so first, we're going to look at the left of state one. And so just kind of like plugging in the values. So N, which will be the number of molecules times K B times L N of M one L over N one. And then for the right side of state one, we're using, there's no B molecules. So this is going to turn out to be zero because you're multiplying by this N at the front end. And so zero times all of these will equal zero. So you don't need to add that in when computing the total entropy of state one. And then for state two, on the left, it's going to be the number of molecules on the left of state two times K B times L N, the number of grid molecules or grid boxes on the left of two, state two, divided by the number of molecules again. And then for the right, it'll be just the exact same as these, just like we're just, again, I'm just plugging in like these values to the specific cases. And so and again, so S two will just be the addition of those two to get the total entropy of state two. You take the entropy of the left plus the entropy of the right. And then the change in entropy will just be S two, this value minus S one, which will will just equal to the S one L because S one R is zero. And so one way to do this is to kind of put all these all these equations together. So this is the left plus a state two left plus state two right. And then subtract from that state one. And from there, you, and these are just the equations that are like listed right here. And from there, you can either, you could choose to plug in all the values to this equation. If you're more comfortable doing it like that, I know sometimes like simplifying things can get confusing. Or that could be a way to double check your work if you are going to simplify it. But it might be easier for some people prefer to like simplify out variables. And so basically, the main variables that we simplify is the M is going to be equivalent for all of them is just 10 to the six grid boxes. And then the number of molecules for state one is going to be two times the number of molecules for both state two on the left and state two on the right. And so that'll give you a simplified equation, which you can kind of see I did here. And then from that, you'll get a final equation that the change in entropy is equal to K B times the number of molecules on the left times of state one times L N of N L one over N L two. And so you'll end up getting this from like logarithmic rules. And so from there, you leave K B as blank and then you'll or as K B, and then you would plug in the value for that, which is two times 10 to the fourth. And then multiply it by L N of two times 10 to the fourth over one times 10 to the fourth. And that will give you your final response. And then for which was in here. And then for the the second part of the question is just asking, will state one spontaneously convert to state two? And so like looking at this, you can kind of like get a feel for what the answer would be. But basically, you just, if you, you can also use your answer from the previous question. And so if the entropy increases, which would mean that the answer to the previous question was positive, then yes, state one will spontaneously convert to state two. Whereas if entropy decreases, and so that would mean that the answer to the previous question would be negative, which you can see that isn't, then the answer would be no. Does anyone have any questions? That's it for problem two. If not, then the next two can start.
Okay, I'll be going to question three for problems at seven. You should be able to see my clipboard. Okay, so problem seven is focused on two micro, two microstates of a, of a macrostate. And you're given two energy levels with the number of particles within each energy level. For the first part, they're asking you about what the temperature is for a energy level that or a microstate that is in thermal equilibrium. So when there's thermal equilibrium, you know that the energy levels will be, the number of molecules in each energy level will be described by the Boltzmann distribution. So using the values given to you, you know that the number of energy levels in the higher state over the number of molecules in the lower state will be equal to E to the negative changing U or U is the energy divided by R T. And since you're given N one and N zero for state B, you can plug those in and then solve for T. And that should be a pretty standard calculation that you're familiar with now. For part two, you're asked about the difference in entropy. Now, since you are given the number of molecules in each state, this should lead you to use the probabilistic definition of entropy now. So I'll do the part of the calculation for state A only. You should be able to do state B by yourself after. And then for the probabilistic definition, you will need the probabilities that that you'll find a molecule in a certain energy level. And to find that, the probability will be equal to the number in a, an energy level over the total number of molecules. So what it looks like for the lower energy level of state A is that P zero will equal one times 10 to the 23 over the total, which is one times 10 to the 23 plus 0.049 times 10 to the 23. But since they both, since they're all to the multiplied by 10 to the 23, I'm just going to omit the 10 to the 23. And you'll have one over one plus 0.049, which is approximately 0.953. And then P one will be equal to the other half or the other part, which is 0.49, 0.049 over 1.049, which is approximately 0.047. And then you should plug this into the formula above where S A will now equal negative N K B times. So you'll have P times L N of P, which is 0.953 L N 0.953 plus 0.4047 L N 0.047. And when you do that calculation, you will get the entropy for state A. And then when you do a similar thing for state B, you'll get the entropy for state B. And then you'll be able to get the difference between those. But keep in mind that this formula, this probabilistic definition will give you the total entropy. And the question wants or the answer should be in units of joules per mole per Kelvin. So you will have to convert from joules per Kelvin to joules per mole per Kelvin. But that should be a simple conversion using Avogadro's number. And then for part three, you're asked about the partition value of the partition coefficient of the, of the system. And you should know now that that will be just the sum of the Boltzmann factors of the energy levels. So that would be negative U I over R T and summing over all of the energy levels with the Boltzmann factor. And since we know that U zero equal or you O, you not, you O is equal to zero. And you one is equal to five kilojoules. You can plug that in and you'll get that it'll be E to the zero plus E to the negative 5,000 R T. And I'll leave you to calculate that. Remember that five kilojoules, you will have to put in units of or back into units of joules when you use R T or you can convert the R T to kilojoules either way. And then for part four, you're asked about the probability of finding a molecule on the upper level at 350 Kelvin. So now that you're at a different temperature, the probability that you'll find molecules in a certain energy level will change because with a higher temperature, that means the higher, that there's an higher average energy. So to find the probability now, you have to take the Boltzmann factor of the higher, of the upper level and then divided by the partition coefficient. What that will look like will be E to the negative U one over R T. And since R one is the same, it will just be 5,000 again. And Q, you should calculate from above. And why this makes sense is that this is kind of like a weighting system where the Boltzmann factor is like the, is the likelihood that you'll find it in an upper energy level. But Q is a normalizing factor that will bring, that'll make it a probability instead of just a number. So by comparing the, for one, the Boltzmann factor for one level and then comparing it to Q, you'll be able to normalize the probabilities. And a good way to check that is that your probability should always be less than one. Unless there's only one energy level, then it has to be equal to one. For part five, this is a more conceptual. Just to check that you understand how entropy is not, how that there are limits to entropy. But thinking about it in terms of a system and surrounding, you're told that this system will go from state B to state A. However, you should find that this, the entropy for state B is actually higher than the entropy for state A. And you would not expect a system to be able to go down entropy. Because usually you would expect a system to always, or you know, you expect entropy, the total entropy to always increase. But if you look at the second law of thermodynamics, you will see that it's actually described by the change in the entropy of the universe is always is equal to changing entropy of the system plus change in entropy of the surroundings. First of all, and that this will always be greater than or equal to zero. So now we know that this change in S system will be less than zero because it goes from a higher entropy state to a lower entropy state. And that means that this has a certain condition that it must fulfill. And you should be able to figure that out from this equation. And that should be all for question three. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, we can go on to problem four.
All right, so we're covering problem four. Let me share a screen. All right, can everyone see my screen? Let me know if there are any issues with my screen share. But so question four, review some concepts related to the macro Boltzmann distribution. So in the first part, you're asked to consider the movement of hydrogen atoms in just one dimension. And you're given the Boltzmann distribution here. So for the first part of this question, you're asked at a temperature of 1,000 Kelvin, what's the ratio of probability densities for two different velocities? V X one, V X two given here. And that's essentially just calculating the ratio of these two probabilities. So I've copied the probability density equation from up here down here. And one thing to note is that when you're taking ratios, the constant terms will cancel out. So essentially, the only term you need to care about are the ones that depend on the X. So this would mean that the ratio is P of V X one over P of V X two, which is from this equation, E to the negative M over 2 K B T V X one squared over E to the negative M over 2 K B T V X two squared. And here, all I've done is just substitute V X one and V X two into this expression for the probability density. And then we can of course simplify that further using what we know about properties of exponentials. Just bring everything into one term. And then from there, all you really need to do is substitute the values you're given here to, into the quantities in this expression to solve for it. And then for question four, part for question four, I pardon B. You're asked whether the answer here meshes the expectation from the Boltzmann distribution. That the probability a molecule has a particular value of energy decreases with increasing energy. So what this means essentially is that if you have increasing energy, then you will of course have increasing velocity. And since you're given these two velocities here, you know how these two velocities relate. So the expectation you have from the Boltzmann distribution then is that as you increase in velocity, there's, it's less likely that the that the atom will adopt that velocity. In other words, the probability density at that higher velocity should be less. And based on whether this ratio is greater or less than one, the answer to this should follow through from that. All right, so for the second part of this question, you're asked to now move up to three dimensions. And this means that for a given speed, you have multiple different velocity vectors that could satisfy that same speed. And you're given a new Maxwell Boltzmann distribution here. And for the first part of this question, you're asked to explain why there's a factor of C squared in the equation over here. So if we go back to the one dimensional version, you'll note that there's no direct dependence on the V X is just in the exponential term. Whereas when we move to three dimensions, there's this extra factor of C squared over here. So to explain this, this paragraph over here on the multiplicity is useful. So this diagram that they've given over here is for two dimensions where you'll note that for a given velocity, which is C, the multiplicity of it, which is again proportional to the number of velocity vectors that have that same takes the form of this circle around in the two D axis, where each of these vectors represents a possible velocity vector corresponding to that speed. And you might notice as we scale this upwards, that number will scale up proportional to the circumference of the circle. So since that depends directly on C in two dimensions, the velocity of your velocity vector scales directly proportional to C. So since here we're asked to look at this in three dimensions, we can sort of extend that analogy to instead of considering a circle, consider a sphere in three dimensions of all the possible vectors with that magnitude. So in this case, as we scale this sphere outwards, we might expect the multiplicity of those velocity vectors to scale proportionally to the surface area of the sphere instead, which is similar to the circumference of the circle. So then that would scale proportionally to C squared, which would explain the factor of C squared in this equation. And then here, you're again asked to calculate the ratio of probability densities at two different speeds. And I've just copied the probability density equation here again. But the calculation proceeds pretty much exactly the same way as the second part of the first half of this question. The only thing you'll have to keep track of is that you have this extra C squared term over here. And then part C is actually maybe a little more complicated. So we're going to move to part D for now and then come back to it. So for part D, we're asked to sketch roughly the expected shape of the dependence of P F C on C. So if we look at our expression for P F C over here, it's C, it has three main terms. We have this constant beta term, which we're told is just the normalizing factor. We had the C squared term again, which is unique to the three dimensional case. And then we have our normal Boltzmann term over here. And what you want to notice is that each of these behaves a bit differently with increasing C. So with beta, that's just a constant, we can ignore that. For C squared, we know that as the speed increases, this increases quadratically. But our Boltzmann term, we know starts off higher and then drops lower as speed increases. So one thing we want to keep in mind when plotting this diagram over So one thing we want to keep in mind when plotting this diagram over here is to. Keep in mind, depending on the relative magnitude of C, which of these two effects dominates. And in particular, you know that since this is a probability distribution, the it must normalize off to one. It can't just increase quadratically forever. So we have, we know that this Boltzmann term is what's going to be dominating at higher values of C. And then at lower values of C, we might see more of this C squared term dominating. And then. Coming back to the part C then, does the ratio P F C one over P F C two with your expectations from the Boltzmann distribution? So here we're given that P F C one, sorry, C one is one times into the third meters per second. And C two is three times into the third meter per second. So C two is clearly larger than. C one. And then from the Boltzmann distribution, we might expect therefore that it's less likely. For C two to be occupied compared to C one. However, we do have to take into account the C squared term, which means that at, which since it dominates at lower values of C. Depending on where this ratio lies, it may be the case that. The values of C here are low enough that the C squared term makes the higher velocity more likely than it otherwise would have been, which would affect this ratio. And depending on which value you get for part B, you'll have to justify that as part of your answer. And that should be all for question four. Are there any questions?
You explain part four B again for the first part.
Okay, yeah, let me. Should screen again, sorry. So you said for B for the first part, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so. For B relies on the answer for part A. So here we've gotten this ratio, which you should just be able to calculate by substituting in values. And then for this first part, you're asked whether the expectation for the Boltzmann distribution is matched. So from the Boltzmann distribution, you know that as increasing, you have increasing energy, the probability density decreases. And increasing energy means increasing velocity. So in other words, for this specific ratio, since we know V X two is greater than V X one. We expect that the probability of V X one is lower than probability for V X. Sorry, the probability for V X two is lower than the probability for V X one. And that should correspond to a specific. For this ratio. In terms of whether it's greater or less than one. So depending on your answer for this, you should be able to tell whether or not this justifies that assumption. And in particular, you'd want to pay attention to the fact that if in this case denominator is lower than the numerator as should be expected, then. We would expect this ratio to be greater than one. So depending on what value you get for part A, you know whether this confirms or denies that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, any other questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, can you really reiterate the Q for Q four to Q forty? The last question, yeah, there's a diagram one.
Yeah, sure. And yeah, just real quick for questioning the chat. Yeah, the beta cancels out because it's just a constant term. So when we're taking a ratio, that doesn't affect the result. Alright, so for Q forty. Again, the, we're asked to sketch the expected shape of the dependence of this probability density on C. So this is the expression for the probability density. We have our beta, which is just a constant. And since we're just sketching the shape, we don't really need to care about what value that takes. And then the two main terms that depend on C in our expression are the C squared term over here and this regular Boltzmann term over here. And we already know how each of these terms behaves on their own. We know that a C squared term as C increases, this will increase quadratically. And then the Boltzmann term will start off higher and then as C increases, this will drop off towards zero. And we already also know that P F C is a probability distribution. In other words, it can't just increase forever. The area under the curve has to equal one in total. So based on that, we can guess how we'd expect this distribution to behave. And we might note that then we would expect that at lower values, the C squared term is going to take, is going to dominate, is going to take precedence over this exponential term here. Since then, that means that as we're increasing, the probabilities become more likely. And then we expect to hit a peak at some point after which this second term, this Boltzmann term dominates. And that means that as the increases will start to have a decreasing probability again, as we would expect from the normal Boltzmann distribution. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Cool. Any other questions? Alright, if not, I'm gonna stop screen sharing now.